Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our June the second, uh, Rank County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Mr. Slade, if he would, for a word of prayer.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for who you are, for your mercy, your love, your grace, in many ways that you bless us every single day. Um, you give us this place where we can come together and serve with the skills and the abilities that you've given to us. We pray for a healthy dose of wisdom today, Lord, and discernment, so that we can make good decisions that help every person in our community. And I pray that you will give these men and women here what they need today, the resources that they need today to serve well. And I pray for these men, the sacrifice that they make every single day to come and to serve on behalf of their community. Thank you for the sacrifices that they and their families make. Think about the men and women that serve us so capably every day to keep us safe. God, we pray for their protection and Christ, thank you again.
Amen.
Okay, public comments, uh, Robert Owens, you'd like to come forward and state your name and address?
Name's Robert Owens. I live at nine ten Lake Drive, at Lake Forest Apartment. Concerns are about the one two, one, two, three Lakeside Street. Uh, trying to get it uncondemned, so I can actually get out there and renovate it, remodel it, fix it back up.
So you don't currently live there now?
No, sir, I don't.
Is this some rental property or?
Uh, it's a property I'm buying from Meridian Taxe Group, Nineteen for Me. Uh, sent, uh, emailed to Brian Leesel of the documents that they sent me, proving that I am partial owner of the property, and I'm making payments to it, to get the deed and all. And I'm trying to, as I say, get it uncondemned, so I can get out there and do some work to it.
So the, the property currently is not in your name?
Not yet, it's not.
Okay, uh...
This President, with your permission, I've got a little bit of extra information that I'd like to share with the board, uh, that concerns a piece of property that Mr. Owen is discussing with you guys. I'd be glad to share that with you, if, uh, if y'all want to hear that information as well.
I would like to. Let Mr. Slade speak and we'll get you back up here in a minute.
Yeah, you can stand, stay right there and, and when he gets through.
So Mr. Owen, um, is, um, as he mentioned, is working with the current owner of the property to try to achieve title and possession of the property. Uh, on April the fifteenth, this board, uh, condemned the property, uh, as it is owned by this Meridian Taxe Group, okay? Uh, and they were notified, they didn't participate in that, uh, in that activity, they didn't show up at the hearing, there weren't any representatives here. You, you took a look at the photographs that had been put together by our Community Development Office that depicted the condition of the property, and as Mr. Owens indicated, you did condemn it, uh, and you were justified in doing so. I won't belabor the point about the condition of the property. It's clearly not habitable, it's clearly not safe for human habitation. And so, uh, Mr. Owen, uh, has begun working with a structural engineer. I say, Mr. Owen, I'm, I'm assuming Faust Engineering is somebody that you've been working with, is that correct? All right, so, uh, an, an engineer has actually gone out to the property and has reviewed the condition of the property, and has issued a report that basically affirms the position that has been taken by Community Development and by your Fire Coordinator, Mr. Ishi, that this property is not safe for human habitation. And that's, that's affirmed in the engineering report that Mr. Owens has, Mr. Owen has secured. And so, uh, I'm of the opinion that, uh, that Mr. Owen is intending to reform, uh, and invest in this property, and to bring it up to a habitable condition, which removes the responsibility on the county to try to address the current situation there. Right now, what you've got is an uninhabitable, inhabitable structure that's gotta be dealt with, because we don't want people going in there, right? So it's, it's a, it's a burden on the community and it's a burden on the county now that we've done a condemnation. If Mr. Owen is willing to strap on the responsibility to get the property up to code, uh, and to do that in a way that's satisfactory to your Community Development Office, by the book, in accordance with code, subject to a permit, subject to all the inspections, making sure that everything is done the way that it's supposed to be done, then the property could in fact be returned to a habitable condition and we can move on. So, uh, how do, how do we do that, since you've already condemned the property? What we would need to do is to take this up, and, and we can do this on your agenda under additional business, but take this up as a matter that you would consider suspending your condemnation action, suspending it, until such time as Mr. Owen, with his, the help of his engineer, is able to get in there and actually conduct some repair work to get this property out of an inhabitable condition and put it into a habitable condition. Of course, nobody's gonna be permitted to occupy this structure unless and until it's brought up to habitable. And it could be that even though you suspend your action to condemn it, you may have to come back later and say, "Well, they tried, but they weren't successful." And so I wanted to warn Mr. Owen about that. This is gonna be a pile of work to get this property up to speed. It's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of sweat equity, and a lot of money, uh, I, I have a feeling. So, uh, assuming that Mr. Owen understands those dynamics and is willing to do what is required as espoused by our Community Development Office, what will be needed. I, I, my suspicion is that this, uh, Faust Engineering or some other qualified engineer is gonna have to be involved, because this is a foundation issue first and foremost. Mr. Faust spent a lot of time looking at the foundation and said, "Ain't nothing about this foundation that's right." Uh, so that's, that's got to be addressed very quickly. It's gonna be pretty expensive to get this done. So I would suggest let's wait until additional business. I hate to make Mr. Owen wait around, but it's just, this is public comment, we don't trip into act, it's public comment. So if Mr. Owen is willing to wait around until we get to additional business, we'll go through the formal process of considering a suspension of your condemnation action, and then authorization for the Community Development Office to move forward. We could do that now, if the board is, wants to do that now, but I've got it's kinda queued up for additional business.
Right, I'm, if we can go ahead and do it, we can do it, and if, if everybody's good with that.
I would need a motion to add this item to the agenda as an action to consider a condemnation action on one twenty-three Lakeside Street.
I'll make that motion to add.
Second.
Brad made a motion to add, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Now, I'm making a motion, um, my motion would be that...
Suspend.
Suspend the condemnation and Mr. Owen's work with our Community Development.
Mr. Owen, how long do you think it would take us before we, before time's enough that we could go out there and review this?
To be honest, I've got a full-time job, so it, uh...
I don't mind six months.
Six, six months?
But I think that'd be plenty.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, typically our building permits are good for six months.
I'll, I'll do whatever it takes.
Right, so that's gonna be my motion, we'll suspend it for six months, and then you need to be in touch, uh, your engineer with the Community Development, and just get it up, because I mean, it's either gonna have to come down to the ground and start from scratch or come back up.
Yes, sir.
And, but regardless, I mean, it's gonna have to be cleaned up anyway, either by taxpayers, then we put a lien on the property, so...
Two things, if I may, excuse, uh, for, this is for Mr. Owen's benefit, um, this is free legal advice, so you get what you pay for, Mr. Owen. Uh, the, uh, the owner of the property is Nineteen for Me LLC. It appears that Mr. Owens has a, it, it's titled as an, an offer to sell. And so I, I just wanna encourage Mr. Owens to seek out his own legal counsel and make doggone sure that before he spends another dime on this property, that he has a bulletproof way to attain title and possession, so that you don't end up in a situation where you spend a lot of your own money and somebody else ends up benefiting from that because they are still the owner of the property somehow. I would strongly suggest finding legal counsel of your own and make sure that they evaluate the structure of your arrangement with whoever Nineteen for Me LLC is, and just make sure that you don't step into something you didn't intend to, okay? That's, that would be my first free advice on this arrangement. I'm, I'm not satisfied, by the way, that, that the arrangement that Mr. Owens has is enforceable under its current arrangement, okay? So that's first. Second thing, uh, Mr. Calhoun, would be, we need to just make clear on the record that you're authorizing the Community Development Office to issue permits for activities on property that on the fifteenth of April, you said, "Nobody can go on." So we're, when we, when we suspend that condemnation finding that we made, we're authorizing your Community Development Office to say, "The suspension's in place, but permits can be issued." It's kind of a little bit of a hybrid, we wouldn't normally do that. So your motion would be to suspend it and to allow for activities to bring it up to code, and also to authorize the Office of Community Development to issue the required permits for actions, okay? That's, that'll be all of our...
That'd be my motion.
Second.
All right, so I would, I would want Mr. Owen, sorry, go ahead.
Brad, Brad made a motion, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would, uh, ask Mr. Owens to be in lockstep with these folks right here, just make sure they all, they know what's going on whenever y'all are doing your work.
All right, Darla, Shilly, do you need to come speak, or are you good? You with him, okay. Uh, Linda McCoy?
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm not a very good public speaker, excuse me, but I have a complaint about homestead exemption.
For, for the record, can you state your name and address?
My name is Linda McCoy, my address is one zero nine Sharon Lane, Brandon, Mississippi. Okay, the complaint I have about homestead exemption is that it puts a lot of people, uh, in, they have the possibility of losing their homes. Uh, the way the tax assessor has it now is that, um, in around October, they send you the statement saying how many taxes you owe. Uh, they grant these people homestead exemption, all right? Because the state does not have a policy for totally disallowing homestead exemption, um, the application. But, you know, they can deny the benefits if you owe state income taxes, okay? So, so people get a notice in October, it says that you owe this amount, which is the, and if you're age sixty-five, you get the additional exemption along with the regular exemption. Um, you, it says you must pay by February the first. There is no disclaimer that there may be anything added later on or anything else. So then later on, around April, May, they get a letter from, I think it's from Scarborough, the Circuit Clerk or somebody.
Chance.
Chance, okay. And they say that the tax commission, um, is, um, thank you, the tax commission has disallowed your homestead exemption. But from my understanding, and the tax commission, um, attorney, An- Andrew Guyton, says that they don't necessarily disallow it, it's really you all. Um, and that's, I'm, I'm quoting what he told me. So anyway, so that means that you're gonna be charged some additional money. But you don't know what that money is until October. You know, so you go, all that time you, you've paid. In fact, I brought a statement for you to look at, it says, "The tax, the taxes are paid." Then, at the bottom, it shows the additional amount, which is the chargeback, uh, which in this case is more than what you said we had needed to pay by February the first. So, um, but, and it's very misleading when you see it, because it says that you've paid it. Then it says, "You didn't pay it," but then it doesn't, doesn't even tell you the date that this amount was put on there, but we know it wasn't put on your, uh, property taxes until ten months later, eight, ten, ten months later, to get what, whatever February to October is, uh, eight, maybe eight months. So you don't know what that chargeback is. So, my problem is the way this is done, and I want it to be done better, because it puts a lot of people, um, in a predicament, because if you're gonna send a statement saying when somebody is to pay it, then it needs to be accurate. Some, somebody needs to find a way for it to be accurate. It's almost like you buy a car tag, which is a taxing issue as well sometimes, and then you buy it and you drive around, and then all of a sudden, somebody sends you a notice from your county or state and say, "Oh, wait a minute, we need to charge you some additional money." Or maybe you got bought a dress at a store, same issue, then somebody tells you, "Hey, you owe some more money." Because, you know, you, you get a receipt, and on the statement itself, it says that it is paid in completion. So then you get this statement that from, that because the tax commission does it, they tell you all that, um, uh, when, uh, you know, people are not eligible for a homestead exemption because of the taxes. Well, the thing is, why can't you all know, because you're in a arm of the tax commission? So why can't you know when you send the statements out? You know, because they, you know, people risk losing their home. You know, homestead is a protected right. You know, that's, you know, we've had homestead exemptions since, back in eighteen-sixties or so, you know? And so basically you putting a lot of people in jeopardy because you, your records, you know, you tell us one thing, and then later on, you wanna, you ask for something else. So I want that process to be better.
Ms. McCoy?
Yes.
If you wait around, probably not more than fifteen or twenty minutes. Ms. McNich will be up here, giving, we have her in our section, and I'll ask her to explain to us what's going on and how we can make it better, or can we make it better, okay?
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I think I saw over public comments, anybody else? All right, uh, old business.
Motion to approve, Mr. Owens?
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve old business, Steve seconded that, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Consent agenda, has everybody had time now?
Yes, sir.
I have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Ms. Caroline, you can come up and help Steve out, you and Ms. Stacy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, on my agenda item A, I have an authority to issue, to void a homestead chargeback for PPIM four-two-one-six dash one, um, and the authority to refund the property owner for this chargeback that has been dismissed by the Mississippi Department of Revenue.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Caroline, I am correct that Stacy would probably wanna address this, or would it be both of you, or one of you, or?
It's kind of a, it's kind of a combination, so...
That's slight.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I, I'll make the first crack at it, and then they're gonna fix whatever I say that's not right.
You wanna do, after Stacy, do you wanna do it so that she...
Yes, sir.
Will be able to hear and...
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, item A, requesting approval for the petitions to adjust the twenty-four homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion approved.
Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, requesting approval for the petitions to change assessment on the twenty-four real property assessments.
Second. Motion to approve.
Aye, second. Steve made a motion, I seconded the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Salvation Army is requesting a tax exemption for an emergency disaster services warehouse, which is located at thirteen fifty Flowood Drive. This is parcel E-nine-I-two, and they're requesting it for tax year twenty-five, and also for their personal property, pin one-six-eight-seven-five. But, uh, it should be noted that they will actually be renting sixty-five percent of that building for profit, which kind of causes a failure, uh, for their application.
If I may, gentlemen, uh, with Ms. McNich's authority to knock her off the podium here, just for a second. Uh, when we evaluate these tax exemption requests, especially from nonprofit entities, Salvation Army is clearly a nonprofit entity, they're qualified charitable organization under section five oh one C-three of the Internal Revenue Code, uh, we, they're recognized widely, uh, as a charitable entity. However, for specific requests for tax exemption under their charitable deduction authority, as issued by the Internal Revenue Service, we look at that, at, that actual use to determine, does that use fit within the parameters of their charitable work? It's a question that has to be asked, because nonprofits can engage in for-profit activity. They're not prohibited from acting or behaving like a profit entity. And so we have to look to see, are they acting in their charitable capacity, or are they acting in something that looks more like a regular for-profit? If they are not acting in their charitable capacity, then they are not qualified for a tax exemption under twenty-seven thirty-one one oh one. So, to, to determine that, we go through some factors that are widely recognized across the United States. The vast majority of taxing entities, governing authorities utilize what I'm about to read out to you as their standard for evaluation of a specific location and activity to determine, should that particular request be granted, a charitable tax exemption? So, this is how we do it. We look for a, it's a five-step process, and each of the five have to be answered in the affirmative. If any one of the five is answered with a no, then it's, it fails the test, all right? So here, does, does the activity advance a charitable purpose? The activity, so your question would be, does, uh, does Salvation Army's rental of sixty-five percent of the space to, uh, for, in exchange for market rent, as a profit activity, does that advance a charitable purpose? Second, donating or rendering gratuitous, gratuitously a substantial portion of its services. Okay, they're charging market rent in exchange for access to the space. Three, does it benefit a substantial indefinite class of persons who are legitimate subjects of charity? So they are advancing at market rent space to entities that will pay market rent. Four, are they relieving the government of some of its burden? That's one we don't often remember, right? Salvation Army does a really good job, by the way, of relieving the government of some of its burden. Anytime we have a major disaster, they are generally one of the first to arrive and start setting up and helping folks. So, nobody, nobody, uh, is of the opinion that they are not somehow engaged in that kind of activity. They are, and they should be lauded for it, uh, and it's very much appreciated. Number five, are they operating entirely free from a profit motive? Well, they're charging market rent for the space that's gonna be utilized here. So, while we can give them four as a given, I think the other four probably raise some real question marks. I, I've looked at this, and it's my opinion that at least the elements one, two, three, and five would fail in this case. Renting out a majority of the footage in exchange for market rent is not advancing a charitable purpose, it's not a donation of services, it does not benefit a class of persons needing charity, and it is not free from a private profit motive. And so, it would be my opinion that the board should deny this request for exemption and authorize, uh, the board attorney to communicate that back to Salvation Army on this particular request.
Are they asking for the full exemption, or are they asking for the percentage?
Yep, they're asking for a blanket exemption. Steve, we don't have the authority under state law to, to... We, we don't have the authority under state law to give a partial, uh, so...
There's no either or, like the storage side versus the...
If they rented this out, and I don't know what the terms or money is or whatever, and the monies that they receive, they could show that they are donating it back to the charitable part of this, would that make them eligible?
No, sir. Steve, think about it, if they're gonna charge market rent, and they have built into that rent equation the cost of abhorrent tax that they as owners pay, we're not asking them really to do anything different. We're just simply telling them, "When you charge market rent, remit the portion that is your abhorrent tax to the county, as per normal, and then do whatever you want to do with the balance of the funds that you've charged." The people who are renting the facility expect to pay the abhorrent tax impact of the ownership of that property. Otherwise, they'd own the property themselves and pay the abhorrent tax themselves. So it's already built into the, to the cake, uh, we're, we're just simply saying, "No, no, no, we're not gonna let you have a double dip here. We're not gonna let you charge the tenants for the abhorrent that you would've paid, and then give you an exemption for the abhorrent." Now you've gotten a significant benefit from the citizens charging market rent, that includes abhorrent impact, but keeping the abhorrent and not sending it to the citizens of Rank County. I, I don't think we wanna be in that situation. It seems to me that, uh, that one way they could do this is to come forward and say, "We are actually intending to rent this out at way below market rent, way below the abhorrent impact, and what we're asking for is assistance from the community in allowing us to be able to generate some revenue from those rentals that would then allow us to carry out our charitable work." They've not made that showing in the application, they've just simply said, "We want an exemption, and we think we're exempt." And, and we think we need, we, we need more information if that's the case, we don't believe that's the case. So I would, I would ask the board to consider going ahead with, with this one. You've got a resist, a, a request standing, I would ask that you consider denying that request.
I make a motion, did I have a request?
Second.
Jay made a motion to deny the request, Brad seconded it, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, item D is a unique situation as well, um, so this is, um, requesting exemption for PLC RSW Mississippi Holdings LLC. This is formerly Gardens of Memory, so in twenty-two, it, it changed hands, and the exemption fell off, and so they were actually charged for twenty-three and twenty-four taxes. But as a cemetery, they are exempt under twenty-seven thirty-one one. So we're just requesting exemption on that, and then a refund to be issued for twenty-three and twenty-four.
Motion. Did that property get sold?
It did.
And it's not a...
Twenty-two.
It's not a church cemetery, correct, it's private?
That's correct.
And I'm just asking, because I don't know, I mean, do all private cemeteries, are they taxed exempt?
Well, yes, accord, under twenty-seven thirty-one one, I think it's item, at the very first listing, is all cemetery.
Yep. There's no distinction, public, private, church, association, uh, is there exempt?
How did it roll off to get taxed?
Uh, the name did not indicate, I'm assuming... The name did not indicate. I'm assuming when they saw the name change from Gardens of Memories, and then it went back to PLC RSW or went to them, they just didn't recognize that it was still, that that was the cemetery. Yeah. Having not been there, I can't say with certainty, but that's just my assumption.
I make a motion to approve the exemption.
Second.
Jay made a motion to approve. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Yeah, I was unaware that even a private cemetery for profit was tax exempt.
That makes two of us.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Right. I mean, yeah, it's got to be so far from it, it's only, only if I, yeah, yeah.
See, see your business model.
Yeah, I'm not sure people would want to.
You gotta know what, you gotta know what business to get into, and know where you get the tax break, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, if, if, if a landowner, let's just say a large farmer that has five hundred acres, and they have a family cemetery, only that area that's in that cemetery, not the whole five hundred acres.
That's right.
I want to have a big family cemetery.
Okay. Did y'all, and y'all voted on that?
Right.
Okay. Item E, received a request for tax exemption pursuant to Mississippi Code, section twenty-seven thirty-one one for Steen Creek Presbyterian Church. This is parcel E five F one forty, and this is for tax year twenty-six.
I make a motion.
Second.
Made a motion, Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Okay. Do you want me to speak to, right now?
Steve, I'm, I'm glad to handle it right under my section. I'm coming up right after Mike.
Well, Mike don't take long.
That's right.
He won't. Yeah. Mike, looks like you're still losing a little weight.
Oh, yeah, trying to, trying to. Uh, got a request of an AT&T permit to construct a cabinet along Cato Drive and Charlie Dixon.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Well, it's just going to be one of the AT sites where they just put a bunch of them cabinets together, tile the floors in. Uh, board of peas, I got one other thing I'd like to bring up, something me and Mr. Bishop's been handling. Just want to be aware, I think Jay alerted y'all, but we cut some dead trees on private property landowners that was going to impact the road. We got a constituent in the neighborhood that is raising cane about it. They cleaned the trees up. It's one hundred thirty acres of woods right there. I don't know of anything else we can do to make it any better. He's, I want us to go in, I think, and grind all the stumps and plant sod.
Well, they watched the grinding stumps, and I told them that, that would be a board action. I couldn't go out there and do that.
About fifteen.
Fifteen stumps?
Mm-hmm.
In the right of way?
No, it's on private property. It's on the edge of the right of way.
Is it on his private property?
No.
So, this is not the landowner?
No, the landowner, we had permission to cut the trees on, on his land, and he says he's fine with the way the land looks right now.
Well, the landowner that owns the land is good with it, why are we?
The gentleman is threatening to take us to the AG's office, so that's, I guess, why it's relevant, so.
Well, we just, I'll, I'll take the risk with AG's office.
Invite him, if anybody other than him reaches out, and I've already told some of them that they need to come before the board to get, you know, authorization for us to grind stumps because, to my knowledge, we've ground zero stumps since we've been cutting.
Yeah, we hadn't, we hadn't ground any stumps on at least eight or nine.
We start, we start grinding stumps, we're going to be grinding stumps.
That's right.
Right, and if it's not the, the landowner, if, if he's, if he's.
They don't even own this property.
Right, it's kind of like Mr. Roberts issue over there, meant, you know, you got two different people involved, and he don't own the, the property, and somebody's trying to get him to, you know, do something.
I just wanted the board to be aware because he's threatened me and Jay going to the AG's office and everything.
My point of future hangs in the balance.
Ah, yes, yes.
I think that's what I texted.
Right. Uh, uh, we probably ought to just put it under the category of piling on.
Yes.
Uh, that's, that's what's going on here. The situation is as follows. You, you had a, you had a judgment call that was made by the supervisor in the road department that you had danger to the public right of way and the travel roadway, right? Let's start with that, that your authority to address the situation was the result of desiring to protect the public road and the public road right of way. Oftentimes, people assume that the work that gets done infrequently on private property is just to benefit the private property, and that's simply not the case. You guys, we, we've been doing this long enough, and y'all have been on the board long enough to know that when we get ready to go onto private property, we're very, very careful before we do that. We make sure that we can show that the benefit of using any taxpayer funds on that private property benefits the public property. And so, in this case, that's exactly what was done. You had trees that were threatening the integrity of the public road, threatening the traffic. And so, a judgment call was made. First step in that process is to get permission from the property owner to go on to the property to address the situation. Most of the time, these are drainage. Every once in a while, we get trees that have to be dealt with because they're now threatening, they died, and they're threatening the travel roadway. So, that's what we did, what, to address the question that naturally the AG would ask first and foremost, why were you on private property? Well, that's why, okay? So, I see the threat of going to the AG's office as an empty threat. Can be easily explained why we did what we did, okay? Now, the issue of what do you, what is the responsibility once you've gone on to private property? Well, it's, it's really practical. What, what does the private property owner expect? In this case, the private property owner expected the debris to be removed, not just left on his property. I think that was done.
Yes.
Uh, may, may have some expectation about fixing something so that it looks presentable.
No, it's just remove the tree.
Take them down, remove the trees, remove the debris, and move on. Apparently, that was the arrangement with private property owner. As far as I'm concerned, we're done. And there, there should not be, I think to Jay's credit, though, he wanted to make sure you guys were aware. This guy apparently is going to try to make this into some national disaster, you know, issue.
Jay, since your future's on the line, what do you want to do?
Oh, I want to go grind all them stones, if you're going to ask me.
You want to, you want to grind them all?
Well, that's not, we don't even, we don't have that on the agenda. Do you want to add it?
No, we ain't grinding no stones.
Well, let's just move on.
I was just letting y'all be aware of the situation.
If somebody comes in and wants to talk about it, maybe then it'll get on the agenda, but I would say the property owner.
Thank you.
Jay, I was for you, but wasn't going away.
That's all it was, yeah, okay.
Now, now.
We, we'll go ahead and start under my section. Ms. President, we'll go ahead and start with that tax exemption, with the, with the homestead exemption issue.
Can I address something on that before you?
Yes, sir.
Just to let everybody know, we received notice from the Tax Commission on this for the previous year's exemption in February, is that correct? So, that's for the previous year's tax exemption. When this came to our office, we objected to a chargeback. It went back to the Department of Revenue, and they would not accept our objection. So, they're the one, they're the reason the lady was charged back. It's not the magistrate clerk's office, not the assessor's office, not the collector's office, Department of Revenue. Just wanted to make that clear.
What was, what was their reason?
They didn't give, she was delinquent on state income taxes.
Okay.
That has been the reason all along.
So, you say chargeback, are you adding penalties? Is that what that is?
We don't, the state.
Oh, yeah, but the state did?
Right.
Okay.
Right, is that correct?
It's the amount of the.
Homestead.
Oh, amount of the homestead.
Okay, all of them together, okay.
Just the amount from the Department.
Yeah, just, yeah.
She still gets the ten percent assessment.
Okay.
So, that is clear, that where this starts, where this begins, is with the Department of Revenue that has a responsibility to look at Rankin County's homestead exemption role. They look at that, they put it through their computer, and they pick off the social security numbers that match up with people that haven't paid their state income tax. That's where it starts. We don't police state income tax payments. We can't possibly know that. We're not owed state income tax. That's owed to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue says, if you don't pay your state income tax, the legislature has given authority for the Department of Revenue to notify the county where you get your homestead exemption, to take that homestead exemption away so that you will then come back and pay your state income tax. They take away this benefit that you get from the local county, which, by the way, comes from the state of Mississippi. We get our homestead exemption from the state, right? So, the state says, whoa, if you don't pay your state income tax, don't expect to get your local homestead tax exemption, avalorum tax exemption. You lose that privilege. So, who gets to police that, since we don't know anything about state income tax? Since we're not the obligor, we're not the ones who charge people state income tax, where's that going to come from? It's going to have to come from the State Department of Revenue. So, when they get our homestead role, they match those social security numbers up, and they say, mm-hmm. I didn't pay their state income tax, not getting your homestead exemption. You've already given them the homestead exemption. It's because of a timing issue. We don't know they didn't pay their state income tax. We're told that after the fact. So, they've already gotten a homestead exemption because they signed up for it, they applied for it, and they are otherwise entitled to it. Then we are notified later, they weren't entitled to it because they didn't pay an obligation that came due later than that. We'd known about it, we would have taken away the homestead exemption before that, but we didn't know about it. So, when we are notified, by the way, that's why it's called a charge back. You already got it.
Correct Ms. McCoy's problem. She needs to go back to the state and get squared up with her state taxes.
Yes, so when the state of Mississippi, and, and I, I haven't talked to Jess about why did we object to the chargeback? Why did we object to that? So, there must have been something that.
If I receive anything from the property owner, I object, and I received a letter.
Got you. So, we, we intervene on behalf of the property owner in, in the best way we know how, which is to give them a, hey, here's notice that you're getting a chargeback. We send that out, first thing.
So, I know when we do our statements, we always go them the same time of year. Is there any kind of timing from the Department of Revenue when you get these notices?
Well, they sent it out the last week in February because they're due February the first. So, at that point, we notify and give them thirty days.
Alright.
If we don't hear anything, it goes on the tax statement at the end of the year, so December, that's our time.
You know, we don't send out tax statements except one time a year. We do that at the end of the year. I, we're, we're not in the business of sending out intermediate tax statements. It's, it's confusing enough as it is, it's confusing enough as it is to do it when we do.
I don't yet.
Come, come back up.
This is a, this is a Department of Revenue-generated issue. This is your state legislature telling you how it's going to be done by the state, and it's your state legislature telling Rankin County, you're not going to give homestead exemptions to people who owe state income tax. Once that has been resolved, we can go back to our normal operating plan, which is to put the property back on for homestead exemption because it would then otherwise qualify for homestead exemption, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Did that help answer some of your questions, Ms. McCoy?
A little, but there's still a lot of. That information that you, you all may not have. Theoretically, because of Mississippi has a lot of arcade laws, we're the only state that does not have statute of limitation of, um, collection of tax, tax debts. We even enforce a one-hundred percent wage punishment on public employees since nineteen thirty-two, which, you know, along with another group, got that changed. So, now we have people from the nineteen forties who are still on the tax rolls. And because they're on the tax rolls, they never get the homestead, the benefit of the homestead exemption, even though they have their homes. A lot of these people are dead, you know? Um, and a lot of them, of them are disabled because the disallowance of exemption goes to disabled people as well as our military disabled because if they ever owe taxes. But, and I'm just giving you some history, and I'll be brief. The other thing is Mississippi has had a lot of unconstitutional rules in place. One of them was that we couldn't go to the courts unless we paid a fee in order to get, to be heard objectively. But we could not be because we had state laws that said that the courts had to rule according to the, what the Tax Commission has already said. So, we were deprived of that. And because of that, you know, our constitutional rights were violated, and so the state has not corrected all that. So, we've got all these people still in our tax rolls with no hope of ever getting homestead exemption, who can lose their homes, you know, because, you know, we don't, you know, you know, unless we get our legislation sure to change our rules. So, as far as.
You keep saying that everybody's going to lose their homes, but what you're really talking about is percentage of your taxes, whether you get homestead exemption or not.
Okay, but we, you're familiar with tax sales, right?
Ma'am?
Tax sales.
Right.
Okay. So, then they're not able to pay their taxes, what happens?
I got you.
Okay, alright, so, they're in the process, they may lose their home, especially at age sixty-five. Social security benefits decrease, wages, whatever. So, um, I had a, a couple of questions. Okay, I'm sorry, what's your name?
Mark Skark.
Oh, you, okay, you sent the letter. May I get a copy of your letter where you objected to the, um, just denial of homestead exemption? I'd like to have that because.
It's all, it's all online. It's not a letter I send them. It's through the Department of Revenue's website.
Okay, so you actually said you objected, or you didn't include me in the land roll? Is that what happened, or how did you do that?
Well, she said she was, so when you get rejected of the appeal, do you get anything informed from them?
I sent the letter where they rejected the appeal.
Okay, but you didn't send your part.
Yeah, that's all electronically.
Okay, uh, is there any way you can generate something as far as, um?
Jess, can we ask the Department of Revenue to send us a copy of that? Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we can make a request.
Yeah, because if you, if you reject it, it's, you know, I'd like to know.
Yeah, I didn't reject it. I appealed the objection.
You appealed?
I appealed the rejection you got.
Oh, I understand. Okay, alright, alright, okay. And, I, I'm sorry, I got a couple of questions, but I'm trying to get the whole picture. When do you send the land roll to the Tax Commission?
We do that in October, uh, I believe it's October. It's the final land roll for capitulation, is that right?
Okay.
Yeah, it's done in October.
And the land roll for October is for the year previous or the year going forward?
You, you upload the land roll at the end of the year, then you do a supplemental roll, which is what he's talking about in October for that year, for that previous.
Okay.
So, it's.
So, according to the statute, it says that you're, if you want to, if, 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 if we got people who owe state income taxes, your land roll needs to be there at the Tax Commission by June the first.
And that's the homestead rule.
Yeah, okay, but. Yeah, okay, but, so then, um, if it's, but you, you're supposed to have it there, and you're supposed to, what's the, what am I trying to say? So if you, if you have it there, then we're supposed to know what the chargeback is by June first. But we don't, you know, cause you sent the roll in. So we're supposed to know what the chargeback is. But yet, we don't know until October. And according to the statute, it says that if you don't have the land rolls there, um, by June first, or we don't get any paperwork, basically saying we owe additional taxes, then that allows the, 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 um, tax assessor or the county from asking us for the additional chargeback. I'll show you the statute. So you can't, yeah, it's.
But I, I think, I think the whole issue is, is delinquent taxes, you know, on the front end. Am I correct? You know, if you, if you would've paid taxes on the front end, none of this would ever come.
Okay.
To a point. Income tax.
I understand, and you know, that always comes up. But I just shared with you some constitutional violations. And I know you don't work for the Tax Commission.
Right.
Well, I have examined this, I've helped people with my organization, you know? I mean, like, we're the ones that lobbied for the one hundred percent wage garnishment that was in place from nineteen thirty-two that affected only states, only state employees. And we were in the process of filing a, um, constitutional violation because no other state has it, has this. A lot of people lost their jobs, they moved out of state, they CO.
Right.
They wanna move back. So I know you in the middle of all this, but I need to include you, because this is one of the things that's a problem. And so I'm asking you to make it easier for these people. I'm saying, why would you send a notice out that says that the taxes due by February the first? When you're sending land rolls and supplemental and everything, you're sending to the Tax Commission, so you should already had the information.
State law, therefore, or, we don't set that date, the state does.
Okay, even though they set the date, it's supposed to be an accurate assessment. Right, because you already sent the land rolls, you should've already heard from the Tax Commission. So then you should have an accurate amount to bill people for February the first.
We do have an accurate amount, that's when you get your notice, people get their tax notices for the previous year. Starts mailing out in December. You receive it, if you get a tax bill, you should receive it by, in December. That you owe that amount by February the first, which is a state legislature sets that date. Not the, not Rankin County, not Smith County.
Okay.
It's all set by legislature, it's all by statute.
Okay.
And it's our obligation is to follow the state statute as it is with all other counties.
Okay, but you got a land roll that you sent in October, and you sent another one in February. So if you're sending land rolls, then why isn't that corrections I made, not made by February the first?
We are dealing with taxes in a rigor. The Tax Commission doesn't notify us until the following year that you or anybody that owes income taxes has, their homestead has been.
Okay.
Withdrawn.
And I understand that. But I'm gonna tell you what the Tax Commission says, they says it's all on y'all. So I'm going in between.
Right.
You know, so all the thing I'm saying is, I think, um.
We don't, we don't decide. They send us a list where they have charged back somebody.
Right.
They're the one, Department of Revenue sends that to us.
And at the same time that they get the information from the chargeback, the individual that's getting the chargeback receives the letter at the exact same time. So you don't have to wait until the following year when it's added as a true chargeback. You get a letter basically at your head of time, telling you if this is gonna come up on your next tax bill.
Okay, but then why can't we know what the chargeback is in February when you get the letter?
You get the same letter.
Okay, but what is the chargeback amount?
It, it tells you what the, I, I don't know, everybody's.
Nobody knows until October, the problem.
You should be able to contact the accessory office when you get the letter, and they can tell you the chargeback.
We, we did that. Uh, we did that, they can't tell you the chargeback. So, that is a problem.
Okay, why don't we say we can set up a meeting with, maybe with Jessica and.
I think the legislators.
Yeah, the legislators, somebody, cause it's, it's, it's not really. Right.
This, there was some of this covered in this past session, or was maybe discussed, didn't make it very core out of committees. But they, I don't know if you were involved, but there was some of this about garnishing state employees based on taxes, state income taxes owed to the state. Uh, I don't think it was, I don't think it made it very forward out of committees, or there wasn't a bill in here.
Well, that should've been resolved, hopefully, because they can only do twenty-five percent. Because we made it where the, the public employee can, he can opt for twenty-five or a hundred. But it used to be prior to two thousand twenty-three, a mandatory one hundred percent wage garnishment. And so, and that law went into place in nineteen thirty-two, so we ended up getting that changed. But the other thing is, you know, and I'm, I'm just saying little things.
Would ya?
Cause we don't have some answers. One thing is, can a tax person take these people's properties since they paid part of it and the rest is still pending? That's one question I'll, and, and, you know, that's for tax sale. Other thing is.
You have to not pay your property tax.
Three years.
Three years.
Right, but they paid part of it.
You still gotta do it.
You've got, you've got three years to pay it, your complete taxes. You, you can come in the third year and go back and pay that first tax sale, and then you've got an additional year to catch up on your taxes. So you've got a three-year from twenty, let's say twenty twenty, is when you start, your property starts selling. You've got twenty-one, twenty-two, that you can catch up twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two on, right? Okay, so you've got a three-year span in there that you can go back and pay those taxes.
With fees and penalties.
Right, with fees and penalties, that are set by the Department of Revenue, the state, not Rankin County.
Okay, um, yeah, fees and penalty, that was another issue, I'm sorry, thank you. You have a lot of questions because I'm, I, I'm a part of the committee.
Well, can we do this somewhere else, since, cause we got to really move on.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean.
These, these questions, I wanna address this real quick, these questions you're asking, you really need to sit down with your senators and representatives, because they're the ones that can change the law to address the issue, every issue that you bring.
Okay, and believe it or not, we are working legislatively, uh, we actually.
I do believe it.
Yeah, we had a bill that, you know, we.
But these gentlemen have no control, they can vote all day long, gonna change that for what you want, and it goes nowhere.
But there are some things they can change, like here. This additional amount was assessed, but it doesn't have the date it was assessed. So it makes it look like it was a part of the whole bill, but it wasn't. Because we're actually gonna go to court with this, and this is, that's why this is important for us.
Okay.
Because the date, uh, I should use.
Right, alright, Mr. Slade? Go ahead.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy.
Thank you.
First item under my section, gentlemen, is to, let's see, looks like we're gonna set public hearings, items A, B, and C on June the sixteenth at nine AM. Uh, I think one motion for A, B, and C is sufficient.
I'll make a motion. I made a motion, Jay sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Item D, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Kenny Dawson conditional use permit at one twelve Fisherman's Lane. It's a District One property, we'll open that public hearing. Mr. Dawson is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a seasonal crawfish cooking and sale business at one twelve Fisherman's Lane. The business will be conducted from an existing structure that's located on a four-point-one-two acre parcel. That parcel is currently zoned A-one, agricultural zone. Uh, Mr. Dawson indicates that the, uh, operation of season, what, operation will be seasonal, running from February through July, the specific hours of operation are not yet determined. The site includes hard surface parking. Mr. Do- Mr. Dawson plans to renovate the existing structure to comply with ADA accessibility requirements, including upgrades to ingress and egress and restroom facilities. We've not received any calls and opposition on this request. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Kenny Dawson conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to, uh, speak in opposition on this matter. This would be a use that's authorized by conditional use in an A-one zone. Um, and, uh, unless the board has specific conditions that it seeks to comply, I don't think we have any specific conditions on that. So at this time, unless you have questions, we'll close that public hearing, it'll be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say.
I made a motion, Scott sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Uh, next item under my section is approval of the final resolution for abhorrent tax exemption for the Cooperwood Senior Living LLC, and acknowledgement of the letter received from the Mississippi Department of Revenue stating that the request is soon certified as eligible. You, you've already acted as a board to authorize this particular exemption that was simply conditioned on the Department of Revenue certifying that as an exemptable activity that has been received, so all you're doing here is acknowledging receipt that it has now been certified by the state as required. Just need a motion to authorize the acknowledgement and approval of the final resolution.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Steve sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Item F, Mr. President, is the ratification of authority for the board president to execute an MOU between Rankin County and Simpson County. This is a ratification, uh, because the, uh, the activity, which is to allow Simpson County to use our paint wagon, has already been underway. So we could just ratify the MOU to that effect, helping our friends out in Simpson County.
I second it, Jay made a motion, I sec'd the motion, any further discussion?
Yes. Um, I assumed our paint wagon is to do striping.
I believe so, is that right?
We, we've got a lot of striping to do, huh? Okay.
Apparently Simpson County.
They need a couple of weeks, I think.
Apparently Simpson County has a lot of striping to do too.
Well, they need to do it on their bridges, they got state aid inspection coming up, so they needed to, uh, go out there and do some.
Approaches on their bridges.
Alright.
You good with that, Steve?
Yes.
You just wanna make sure we get our striping done, correct?
Uh, that's, that's, that is correct.
Right, I'm, I'm with you, I got some roads too.
We're, we're gonna borrow Simpson County's paint wagon, Steve, and get after it, okay?
Okay.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Alright, uh, item G is adoption of revised standard operating guidelines for our voluntary fire departments, authority of the fire coordinator to distribute those, uh, revisions effective June two twenty-five. Uh, you've been provided with a copy of the SOGs as revised. Uh, this time we would have, uh, an opportunity to discuss anything that needs to be discussed on that, and, uh, Mr. Ishi, the fire coordinator is here to help us with that if necessary.
I think we need to get the fire chiefs from the local fire department to volunteer and go over some of this, make sure that, you know, they're on board and that they're satisfied with what the decision that we're making. So everybody, you know, before we act on something without getting their input, you know, acting, you know, on their behalf. I think we need to talk to the fire chiefs, uh, of each volunteer fire department and show them, and discuss it with them, make sure that they're on board, so we're not.
Just ask Brian, they may have already done that.
It's my understanding that they, that has been in communication with the chiefs this entire time.
Right. Well, I would like myself, instead of taking it secondhand.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, to be in front of, because nobody's contacted me from, and I've talked to a couple of fire departments, you know, pretty regular, but nobody's mentioned it to me. And I know what happens when you assume.
What we can do, gentlemen, is condition your authorization to roll these out uh, with some, some limited pause in them, maybe thirty, sixty days. You just put a pause in the effectiveness to give, uh, each of you an opportunity to communicate to your respective chiefs. And just make sure that they are aware of the changes. I, I wanna remind the board, our SOGs have been in place ever since I've been board attorney, we've had standard operating guidelines, that goes all the way back to March of eight.
And then like I say, I'm not saying I'm against it, I just wanna make sure that, you know, meet with them in, you know, in my district, make sure that they're, do y'all agree?
Yeah, I mean, we got some departments throughout the county that are doing great and don't have any issues, but then on the other hand, we do have some that are struggling a little bit, and I think they do need some, some help in some areas.
So our guidelines, uh, that are, have been in place for, I, I'm gonna guess, hazard a guess, probably thirty years? Maybe longer?
That's fair.
Uh, are, are radically the same, uh, as what you see here printed. Uh, there have been tweaks over time, I can give you some examples on that. We have a beefed up social media policy. Thirty-plus years ago, we didn't have social media issues. So as we, as, as we move into a new situation culturally and in our community, oftentimes we have to address particular policies. There's been enhancement of the, the types of, some, some character and quality issues that relates to who is being allowed to serve as a volunteer. We've had to beef up some regulations in and around who gets to drive the equipment. Uh, and, and what sort of prior reviews we need for those who are authorized to drive our equipment, right? Uh, and, and it's, th- those are examples of, of the kinds of updates and revisions that you would see through time. So the most recent iteration does not drastically revise or change the existing SOGs, but there are a few, uh, examples in these revisions that probably it does bear to have some conversations. Just make sure that before these get implemented, before they roll out, and this is what we're gonna go by, that your chiefs at least have the courtesy of an opportunity to hear about it.
Right.
Okay, so what, what I would suggest, if y'all are open to this, is let's go ahead and make them effective, but pause the effective date for sixty days from the date of the adoption. That'll give y'all a cha- or, or thirty days, whatever y'all feel like you need, to give you a chance to actually have your conversations.
I'll make a motion to sixty days.
Sixty days.
I sec'd that motion.
We'll make those effective August two of twenty-five, I will change the date on that header page. Sam, and then that'll be, uh, 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 unless we hear back from you guys, they, they'll go into effect on August two.
And if we come back with some changes or something like that, then we'll make them.
The changes will be in there before they go into effect on August two.
Right.
Y'all good with that?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's how we'll handle that. Uh, and so we'll show that matter having, and who, who made the motion?
I made the motion, so we have both.
Scott made the motion, I sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Uh, item A, gentlemen, is a resolution authorized to approve the retention of professionals in connection with your two thousand twenty-five general obligation bond issuance, uh, which relates to the next item under your agenda there. You've had an opportunity to look at your resolution. Uh, this is a, a resolution that provides for specific responsibilities as it relates to your GO bond for those, uh, professionals that are identified. They just need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Jay sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion carried.
If y'all want me to read this next resolution item, I'm happy to do that. This is your resolution of intent, I'm gonna summarize, Jay. This is your resolution of intent, you are telling the world, anybody interested, that you intend to issue general obligation bonds, not to exceed forty million dollars, and for the specified purposes that you see there, which includes any authorized purpose under the bond statute as well, so it's a blanket authority for, uh, for, uh, capital improvements that are authorized under the bond statute for a specified period of time, up to forty million dollars, not to exceed. That would be the motion to adopt that resolution.
Motion approved.
Jay made a motion.
Second.
Steve sec'd the motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
That matter will be, uh, published, uh, in the newspaper, uh, as per state law. Uh, and then, uh, assuming, uh, that things go as planned, uh, there will be further action that's required of you at, at appropriate times as we move forward.
Alright.
Um, I have a couple of items, uh, or one item of additional business for sure uh, to discuss with you after Mr. Hicks' presentation.
Mr. Hicks, step on up. Fix your collar a little bit. There you go, alright, proceed.
Alright, uh, item A is authorization under Mississippi Code Section thirty-one, seven thirteen, N V. NV. It's for myself or designated person to participate in a government auction or in an auction of government equipment. We're looking to buy a twenty-twenty-four Kenworth T three eighty grapple truck in an amount bid up to one hundred and fifty thousand. This is required that you authorize me in an auction for a specific amount on a specific piece of equipment. The auction is, I believe, is June tenth. So we're looking to go buy a grapple stump, grapple truck to help.
Remove the trees and stumps.
So what, what piece of equipment are we not gonna buy since we're buying this?
Stump grinder.
A stump grinder, about the same price, I think.
I don't think this is on our, went on your budget to buy it. So something's gotta give, right? But is there?
Well, we've got a budget for it for next year. Uh, Jay, to replace the one we had. And these are two new trucks. They're just a year old. And we're just gonna go ahead and take the opportunity to try to buy, buy one of these. They've got two at auction.
Yeah.
Take the opportunity to buy one.
We're not increasing the budget? It's working within the current budget.
Jay, we just got so many dead trees that we're trying to, to get up and, you know, more than what we anticipated.
Yeah. And this is a guarantee we'll buy it. This is the opportunity to go bid on it.
That's a good one.
Well, the new one, once you say the new one, a new one costs about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're trying to get a one-year-old one.
Two seventy-five.
And how many will that give us, Mike?
That would give us two right now.
Is that what we got now or just one?
Are you gonna keep the one we have right now?
We're gonna keep it right now along with cutting these dead trees down and trying to get cleaned up around here, Steve.
Okay.
Yeah. Every time a storm comes by.
Yeah.
People throw out the limbs, you're out.
We just can't, we can't keep up with what we're trying to do.
And we're still cutting trees. We, we still got a lot of dead trees to get to.
We'll report back if we're successful.
Alright.
You made a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded the mo- oh, my bad. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Ah. Motion carries.
So what you have before you now is, uh, the next item is the outdoor weather sirens. Um, couple notes on a couple of these bids. If you'll notice, the low bid from American Signal Corporation, that bid did not comply with our specs. That was something they threw in on top.
The alternate E P M?
Yes, sir. That bid did not include the stationary sirens. What was the factor on the off, on the off the bid?
One thing they disagreed with the term on our batteries that we specifically put in there because that's one of your biggest components of the siren.
Yeah.
And they, they disagree or they just meant to work for it. They didn't like it.
Yeah.
So, and also did not include the radio communication equipment.
So the, the one point two is, we can't even factor that in?
You should ignore it. It doesn't meet your, even the minimum of your specifications that you've said to everybody. By the way, none of the other bidders chose to similarly bid. And so if you were to accept that wholesale revised, generally unacceptable bid.
Just had to re-advertise it.
You've got to expla- you've got to explain that to the up two. My, my thought would be that in order to really, in order to be in a position to accept that one point two, you need to reject all bids and go back out with a revised spec list. And I honestly, I think we're too far along in this process to consider that as a reasonable alternative.
So the, the next low bid was Jack's Communications at one point five, one one million. And they agreed to all the stipulations in the bid specs.
I think the motion we award the bid to Jack's Communications.
Second. Is there a timeline on installation?
There is. Um, I can look it up. It's, it's within six months, eight months.
I thought that's what you said.
Alright, good thing for little press announcements that we are replacing all of our weather sirens in that county.
And that is, what, thirty-eight or thirty-nine?
Forty sirens.
Okay.
Um, it also includes six new, or five new locations if we need those.
Alright. Jay made a motion. Scott seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
It, the bid is up to forty-five.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
Sirens that meet our specifications and communicate with our systems.
So it, in following up with communications, uh, you know, our current website has on there, it's called Regroup Mass Notification.
Yep.
I would like to know if this is actually working. If it is, we can actually start using this to get messages out to public, like public notices, for like public hearings.
Well, that, it absolutely, it is, it is working. I can tell you.
It is working on the weather.
We've got Regroup set up is for a one-way emergency notification, um, to the citizen. So severe weather, it works.
Emergency.
It works. Um, also whenever Mike notifies me of a road closure, I can put that on there to a different group of people who have specifically signed up for road closure notices.
Could we not have on there that they would like to get set up and notified on any public hearings or, or just any general announcement period?
County notifications.
Right.
Just general notifications. We could set that up. They would have to go back in there and.
Right.
And opt-in to that.
Yep.
Uh, but just so that you're aware, like you can't specifically target a certain district. Like it would go to everybody every single time.
Whoever signed up for it. Yep.
Is there a change in the contract to allow that?
We have the tool. I say we start using it.
Well, I thought Wilson then was working on how they come and.
On Facebook, social media pages or something.
He's supposed to be.
The website's in progress. We're working with the company now. Their, their, it's in their hands design. And we're waiting on feedback on where they're at.
I'm thinking we're talking about two different things.
Well, no, because we're talking about putting no vacation on what Brian was talking about, you know, like in the county that people can sign up on Regroup.
So our current provider, you know, we started this website. There was a place where you could go sign up on there for just what we were talking about. You know, I guess over the years it's gone away or, I, I don't know. That's a Wilson question. But the one that we need to get on, the.
Right.
Like we need to start offering services. Just today, we need to make, make an announcement that, hey, we're replacing all of our weather sirens.
Chuck's gonna put that in the paper next week.
Good to see you, Chuck.
Okay.
I think we can do a Facebook post for our Rankin County Emergency Operations. Does that say anything?
Yeah, it's really, uh, emergency operations fit, but you know, I'm talking about the weather side. I got you. Yeah.
Alright. Do we have any additional business?
Yes. One more thing.
Okay.
Alright. Tim, I talked to you last week. I don't see anything on our agenda about what we discussed.
You talking about on the, uh?
Building, tearing it down?
Yeah. Y'all authorized advertising that back when you told us to put the plans and specs together. So I didn't need any authorization. Asbestos removal is going in the paper this Wednesday. So it didn't need more than actually, don't have more than.
And the other?
In there doing? Uh, July third at two P M is the bid open.
And that's just to take asbestos off.
Off the market.
Then we can put out, and it'd be more. I think more people would.
Be a bid for.
It'd be just a demolition. So what, at the, at the end of the asbestos removal, that contractor certifies that it's clean of asbestos. So that document, his certification, will actually go into the specs for the demolition. So that, the demolition contractor has the, the notification that it's clear.
And, and we're same way on the, the battery plant in Florence.
A little bit different there. And Craig making, uh.
Well, I talked to him, you know, about it. So we're.
So where do we stand? Or do we have, taking action to get that going?
So what we're working on now with the environmental consultants is testing to classify the materials. So there needs to be some testing before it's bid. So the bidder knows this equipment or metal or whatever needs to go to this type of landfill. This can go to metal recycling. We've got to classify that. So he doesn't think he can take it all to.
One place.
So where are we adding that process?
I should have the testing scheduled this week, in the next, actually in the next couple of days. This week. So then we can start the testing and get that in the document. And I think Craig has some, uh, update maybe on the DEQ side of it.
We're, we're not gonna be in a position to do anything from a formal activity standpoint, such as with a, a, an abatement vendor post going to bid on that, uh, until we have cleared all of our responsibilities and requirements with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, we also need to be reminded that a portion of this property is immediately adjacent to property that's owned by an environmental trustee in bankruptcy on behalf of the bankrupt battery entity. And so there will be actions and activities that relate to that property that we have to communicate about. And we can't really have those conversations until we're finished with DEQ.
So we're looking a few years down the road then?
Probably not. What we're looking at is a process that's already underway. I had a meeting with DEQ on Friday. Uh, so the process is already underway. The, there are many steps in that process, but those should not take an inordinately long period of time. I think we're looking at a process that can be underway to y'all's satisfaction within twelve months.
Yeah, it's, things are going pretty good, Jay. Okay.
Governor declared emergency.
What, what Tim is, is talking about happening needs to be happening because it doesn't impact materially, impact what we're trying to do with DEQ.
Yeah. I was just trying to help my friend down there in District One, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's coming.
That's all I have.
Um, I've handed out under additional business, um, the board will entertain a discussion of the bond project list. I think everyone has a copy in front of you. This is just a compilation of what I've heard so far. It's just a starting point.
That tax collector professor bill looks pretty high to me.
We probably get it about like what the animal shelter would call.
Y'all are buying some property, fire departments buying property to build in your station.
Yes, we're.
Is that outside of this bond issue?
No.
No, it's, it's gone.
Jay.
You didn't hate it too, that'd be like what you thought.
Well, I've adjusted mine. I've adjusted mine for what I was given. Yeah, no, no, it's gonna be more. Because I've, I've actually got eight hundred on it, uh, mark.
Everything totals up.
Holly Bush, are they buying property to build that station?
Most of the property is wetland, or at least half.
Not wetland.
Floodland, floodland, floodland. Uh, and there is one dwelling on it, but no one lives in it. It's not, I, I've, it's anyhow.
Okay.
Uh, it's on the corner of Holly Bush and Clark Road. And it's perfect location.
Well, we gotta buy the house.
Well, I don't know how much we might pay for it, but I'm sure we might pay something for the house.
I was just looking at the difference in the cost of three of the fire stations.
Yeah. Well, the one at Holly Bush is gonna be a.
Would be a, a living.
It's.
It's gonna be a full time.
It's gonna be a full-time station. Yeah.
I just know of hours, guys, when we built the last one in Richmond.
What? Well, that's been several years ago, hasn't it?
Gentlemen, these are all estimates. These are all best guesses, quite honestly, without a whole lot of, of information.
Lot of projects.
Right. I, is, Scott, you think yours is gonna come in at four?
I think it will.
I thought it was more like six.
Well, like I said, I, I tried to stay within the budget originally talked about. So you talked about four million.
I'm more trying to get other.
Projects. So that's why I tried to stay within this.
But we also need to be realistic.
Yeah.
You know?
Your intent resolution provides a healthy dose of reality, doesn't it? Because you said that when you get actually ready to go to market, we should have a much better, fine-tuned estimate of what your actual projects, the ones that y'all are deadly serious about getting done. You've got the flexibility in your intent resolution to issue up to forty million dollars. Nobody is planning for that to happen. But as we refine these estimates and we start getting reality kind of slapping us in the face about costs, you do have some flexibility there to adjust your numbers so that you can cover the ones that are the highest priority.
I, I think, I guess Keith, whoever put this together did a good job. And it's even around the county.
And we did get our audit back, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, sir. You did. Uh, and my understanding is that, uh, that the financial advisors are already at work today, even, uh, working with the rating agencies to adjust, uh, and get our rating back in place, uh, before we have to go to market.
Okay.
So I'll make any changes y'all dictate.
This is kind of a working list, yes.
Well, let's see what, I mean, we, that's all gonna determine on what we can.
What, how much we get?
We can qualify.
Yeah. Some of mine has, when I say has gone up, I meant I've added to it, but it's not, I mean, they're the same projects, you know, but it, you know, like for the Cleary Fire Station, you know, might be seven hundred thousand versus five hundred. Uh, you know, on, on.
So you're gonna take the other one out?
No.
Oh.
I might take some more, I might take some out of, of my overlaying.
Yeah.
To get to it. But what I'm getting at, I, I got the two fire stations and, and, uh, and some overlaying at some more. Most of mine are going for fire departments, you know, volunteer.
Will this finish out Gunner Road phase? I mean, it's phase three, the last part of Gunner Road that we haven't?
Yes.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be phased, just like it says right here. It might be phase, uh.
Three A.
At the bridge, we don't know if the railroad track, that is substantial.
Still.
That's a different, that's, are we talking about Gunner Road? I am too. There's a bridge, a railroad over there?
That's Gunner Road.
That's, that's Warren Farm Parkway. Yeah. That's, we're just talking about Gunner Road. Two different projects.
Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about finishing past. Past, uh, Briar Hill Assist, uh, Nursing Home from there to the, a railroad.
So this is time for NPO, right, to come out with another round of projects?
The call for projects is gonna be in, uh, November, I believe. That's what they told us.
So out of all these, we only gonna have one that applies?
North Shore. Maybe, yes, that's.
Well, it would be like, is it already on the list, the stiff or whatever?
Yes, it's, we, we've never seen it. It's on there where it can be, it can be submitted for the projects.
Do we have any other projects that we know that we wanna submit?
Uh, last time we submitted Greenfield. Uh, we submitted Greenfield again. Didn't score very high last time, but, uh, that, that'd be the main two.
What did we get awarded last time?
We got, uh.
Partially scarred Brandon Road.
Old Forty-Nine, the Ridge.
The Ridge Lane.
Cleary Road to the north end of Old Forty-Nine. We submitted that and Greenfield last time. That was two we submitted. And, and this time, North Shore appears to be one that, uh, would be.
Well, if we do that, that'll be years down the road.
I mean, these covers got to be changed out.
Yeah. The, the issue with Scott's project is the timing. Uh, I think he does need more funding than to show him the sheet. Uh, I just, I don't know that the C and P D D is gonna supplement. So we may actually have to phase it, uh, and not do the project, uh, do, do this portion of the project and then apply for the C and P D D and complete the project or vice versa.
How long will it take you to get a good estimation what the projects, the going to cost?
That one, North Shore?
Yeah.
We, we've got one now. And it's, it's very, it's very generalized, but we don't have enough, a lot of data. But, uh, we're close to six right now. A little under six. but, uh, we're close to sentence right now, a little under sentence.
Okay.
But there haven't been any discussions about any other participation, or that there's some conversations that need to be had about that project.
And you, for like, with P R V, you talking about?
Don't shoot me down yet, dude.
That'll be a first.
Alright. Anything else, Mr. Hicks?
I don't have anything else. Yeah, I've, I've got it. That, that one right there, the bond, bond, the logic list discussion was, uh, was one thing that I wanted to make sure we had, and so, uh, I've got one other, and I'm looking back at Jason, are we okay on an MOU with, uh, Bixburg? Okay, so, uh, so I'd like for permission, Mr. President, to ask you guys to add one item under additional business, which would be consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the City of Bixburg that will allow for the jail to house City of Bixburg incarcerated individuals.
Misdemeanor.
Misdemeanor offenders, uh, in our jail in exchange for payment from the City of Bixburg. Uh, we need an MOU in place on that, there's been some recent adjustments, uh, in state law on that, as you know, and so we wanna make sure that we paper that up effectively. The terms that matter to you guys are that they will agree to pay what is the required amount under state law, which is twenty-five dollars per day for any misdemeanor offender who is in our jail. They are also paying under the MOU for a blanket number of available and assigned spots. The sheriff has the room for this, and so the MOU would provide for twenty-five dollars for every head and twenty-five dollars for every assigned space, and so it's a total of fifty dollars per day. Say that correctly, Jason. So that would be the terms of the MOU, uh, that, uh, that we would ask that you would authorize. Uh, well, Jason and I have reviewed the MOU, I find it to be completely acceptable, uh, and would endorse it for y'all's consideration. So we'd need that item added, and then if you're, if you wish to, to approve.
Is the fifty dollars a break even?
No.
I saw it, I didn't think it was.
Uh, thank you.
We'd have to have eggs in the mouth, detention officers and staff and everything there for the numbers we could have.
Yeah.
So we're shooting around fifteen, so that fifty dollars they go, you know, uh.
I make a motion.
No. No, the, they're, they pay the, they pay for all the medical sites, they miss all intake.
Yeah.
Any medical bills, and another thing we put in there is if they can't release them from here, they have to come over to pick them up and lease them in Bixburg, so they're not walking across the street and stuff like that. They don't want to transport them.
So we're, we're able to do it within our people we have, certainly.
You don't have to add staff, yeah.
I make a motion to add.
I'll second that motion.
Steve made a motion to add, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh, now then I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Steve made a motion to approve, Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, is there some particular reason they remodeling over there at Bixburg or?
I know Warren County Jail is over a hundred years old.
I got you.
They're taking sales, and, uh, I just look, this is an additional income for the, um, space that we have.
I got you.
I assume.
How long will they have it for?
They're, they're building a new one over, uh, they're building a new jail over, uh, Warren County. It, it's anticipated to be, uh, completed in, uh, nine months, around that time. They're, they're already, starting construction on, so this is the last.
What, what is the timeline on our MOU, or is there one?
There is not one. Um, but we've got the, the fifteen slots going, uh, that are gonna be available if they needed, um.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, all in favor?
I have.
Aye, motion carries.
I have need for one item, uh, uh, just litigation matter, uh, to discuss with the board in executive session. And then we have, we were doing this in additional business.
I make a motion, oh, do we have any other additional business?
I think I saw, what, now we.
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, we're through with.
Have I voted on?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we're, we're through with Mr. Owens, Robert Ham, yeah. There's it, there's it done.
Craig, listen to me.
Lit, litigation.
I make a motion, we go into, uh, executive se- now, I make a motion for the need to go into executive session for litigation.
I second.
Steve made a motion for need to go into executive session for litigation. Scott seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Now then, I make a motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Steve made a motion to go into executive session. Scott seconded that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're in executive.